Good evening and welcome to City Council Study Session Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. Two items on the agenda, the first of which is discussion regarding improvements to the Max Westheimer Airport and its impact on Westwood Golf Course, course, period.
Thank you. All right. You might remember, this came up a few weeks ago. You know, staff has been working with OU on a number of fronts. We've got the Jenkins Project going on where we know we have property needs from OU there. They've got airport runway expansion in their mind and they're undergoing a master planning process and so these two projects have kind of converged and are impacting potentially Westwood Golf Course. We wanted to talk to you about that. I'll talk about each project individually and then tell you a little bit more about how they tie in. The Jenkins Project was part of the 2019 Transportation Bond. It included widening of Jenkins Avenue, eliminating a couple of traffic lights at M-Hoff and Constitution and combining those into a roundabout next to the new softball stadium. When we go through a property acquisition process for particularly for a federally funded project, but really for any road project, we do appraisals of all the property that we need and that is where we start when we negotiate with property owners. And so you've seen a number of easements come forward with Jenkins recently. We've settled a number of cases where you all authorized eminent domain and we're left to, I think, just this one last piece, right Sean? The OU property. Unfortunately, we need a lot of OU property and the appraised values exceeded the project budget. It's about $4.1 million. You can see here, there's a lot of right-of-way needed, quite a bit of utility easement, a lot of temporary construction easement and then driveway easements, which we aren't typically paying for. So that value is in those first three items. Under the Constitution, OU can't donate property, but they can paper it up in a way where they're getting value in other ways. And we've done that on previous projects. We've not done that in a project, we don't think, with this kind of value. So it's a little bit more challenging to kind of show where there's value being exchanged in that amount. So this is what the project's going to look like. This red outlined area is the roundabout and then within the blue will be the primary utility location and then roadway expansion and I think a traffic light at Timberdale, which I loved when I was in law school. That is a very tough intersection, I know from experience, but a lot of right-of-way and utility easements being acquired here.
And it's all owned by OU?
We've had, on this northern portion, we've had some private property owners on the east side, but primarily, yes, we're getting into OU property the further south you move in our acquisitions and then of course on the west side of Jenkins as well. So as we talked to OU about this, they're also looking at runway expansion. So as I said, they're undergoing a master planning effort. These runway extension plans would mean they need to extend their runway protection zone, which is the area where you try to protect how the property is used as planes come in to land on the runway. They've got some federal funding they think they'll be getting. They've been working closely with Congressman Cole's office. And then, of course, the expansion and other opportunities at the airport that this could lead to is exciting for the university and could certainly benefit Norman. So with these expanded runway protection zones, I thought it might be useful to talk about what the FAA says about those. The whole purpose is to enhance protection of people and property on the ground. This is best achieved through airport owner control of that land, through either fee simple ownership, sufficient interest through easements, deed restrictions, things like that, land use control authority. We don't have that here because it's a separate entity from the city, eminent domain and then permitting authority. The whole purpose of a runway protection zone or what FAA really wants out of those is they want you to reduce, mitigate, or eliminate any incompatible land uses and so they have charts going through each possible land use and obviously the more dense the land use, the more dangerous, the more people, the taller buildings, of course, are an issue. Golf courses on a whole present a pretty light impact. There is a potential impact, but it's not as serious as a lot of other land uses. And so if you have certain protections, that can be a compatible land use with an RPZ. An acquisition of this property interest represents a value to OU, so that's how it gets brought into Jenkins. So this is a drawing that if you're like me and you're not completely spatially minded, this doesn't make a ton of sense, but it kind of shows the further out you go from the runway that the protection zone raises. And of course, the closer you get to the runway, the more protection you want, closer to the ground. And you can see here, I wonder if my mouse will show up. This is on Westwood Golf Course. We think about four of our fairways and holes, I'm not a golfer, will be impacted. And I've got a better picture of that here. You can kind of see what would be impacted by this runway protection zone. And so it's important to us, and when we talked to council about it back in August, it was important to figure out a way to protect the golf course. I don't know of any 14-hole golf courses. That would be an interesting concept. We'd like to keep all 18, but also, you know, try to find a way to be compatible with whatever the airport is going to require. So we've been kind of working through these issues. The initial proposal from OU was just deed the property to us. We'll lease it back to the city for 50 years for a dollar a year, so long as it remains a golf course and does not interfere with operation or development of the airport in OU's discretion. That's what we talked about on August 29th. You guys were really not comfortable with that language. We proposed an navigation easement instead, which is not a typo, it is an actual name of an easement, navigation, and that really grants the right of flight in the airspace above, the generation of noise and other impacts associated with planes flying over. It can restrict the height of structures, trees, other objects on property. We've been working through those kind of issues with OU more recently. And then prohibits potential on-the-ground light hazards. And so that's another reason why a golf course is a fairly good use. No one's golfing in the dark. We don't have lights out there. So it's really a matter of trees in the RPZ for us. We don't have any structures, I don't believe, within that RPZ. So what we've got now, we've talked about it and gone back and forth about it quite a bit, what we have agreed or gotten OU to agree to is to grant, that the city would grant a perpetual navigation easement. That is valued at $2 million and remember, we're trying to get to that 4.1. If the FAA, though, requires fee title for the runway extension, we would then convey the property to OU and OU would lease it back to the city for 50 years for a dollar a year with an optional 50-year renewal. And that language about OU's sole discretion, about whether or not it interferes with the use of the airport, that's taken out. The city will construct the Jenkins Project by fall 2026 barring some unknown issue or terrible weather. That's valued at $350,000 in the agreement. The roundabout design, that's something the university's very much in favor of and so that's valued at $1 million. And then the remainder payment would be made to OU for acquisition of the property and that's about $827,000 and within budget. OU, if this is agreed to, would convey the land for the project by October 15th. So that would mean, of course, you guys would have to approve the MOU next Tuesday.
Yes ma'am.
So say we approve it, I'm not giving it to OU. Like for 15, no, we're not going to do that. We've poured millions of taxpayer dollars into it. It's nice that the upper echelon want to fly in for a football game, but the residents in Norman aren't going to be damned for it. So if we approve it and then they want them to have the title of property or whatever, I want to make sure that it has to come back before us. So I don't know how we make that work, but...
It would have to come back to you, but the way it's written in here is all of these rights are of value. So I think the question would be, what is the impact to the value that was agreed upon? So that's something we can talk with them further about. I do, I did have a call with FAA today, a, I'm trying to remember his title. He's essentially over this, a number of airports in this area. He's based out of Fort Worth. And he's really more of the grants manager and so I was trying to kind of get a sense of what is the risk that the FAA will require this. Their advisory says that an navigation easement is fine, but I know that someone at FAA has told OU that they're going to prefer ownership. And so I was trying to get a sense of the risk. He wasn't sure. He's going to put me in contact with a project manager who can maybe talk through that issue a little more closely and will be more familiar with their plans. And so we'll get that information hopefully and be able to have that for you before you guys agree to anything, of course, but...
Councilmember, pick up.
Do we have an estimated timeline on when that decision might be made?
Oh, it's a long-term project. I mean, what the gentleman today was telling me is they have to submit their, actually I have my notes right here, they have to submit their airport land plan to the FAA and showing that runway and they have to justify it. So they have to show the need for the runway and then FAA will look at that and it will go through several approval channels to determine whether or not they believe it's justified. And so they'll do all of that and then if they get the funding, which they're hoping for, I think, $30 million in funding from the feds, then they could begin doing the project. But it sounds to me like it's several years away at the earliest.
Okay. Even the decision on whether or not the FAA is going to require a fee title?
Between the decision and the, and getting all the pieces in place, I think it will be several years.
But our MOU is critical to that process, knowing that we're committed...
Right, right. And so I think, my hope would be the navigation easement would be enough. I've offered, you know, if we could file covenants so that it never can be developed as anything other than parkland, things like that. I mean, there's all kinds of things I feel like we can do that will help, but they have been told by someone at FAA that there may be a preference for fee simple title.
Could we put a conservation easement on it prior to selling it or is that muddy the waters too much?
I don't know how a conservation easement would impact...
Basically what, like you're describing, that it would keep development from occurring? You know, what is there could remain in perpetuity?
Sometimes conservation easements have environmental impacts.
Sure.
And so that's what we have to be careful of because they don't want, with an navigation easement, they don't want birds and things that can damage planes as they're coming down in that area. So we can look at that, that might be another option, but navigation easement's really designed for the airspace and what they're needing, I feel like.
That's what I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was in the meeting in August and, I mean, it's, we are currently under a similar situation where, you know, we've poured millions of dollars into facilities and things and, you know, that potential lease agreement is in jeopardy with the sale of the land. So how is this different than what we're operating under right now on Griffin?
I think first and foremost, if the navigation easement is all they need, then we've, we've really lost nothing except maybe trees that are over 42 feet tall. We don't think there's a lot of those. That's kind of the height they've given us. And we couldn't construct structures there in the future, which I don't...
I just mean if the FAA is requiring...
If it requires it and we have a 100-year lease, 50 years and then another 50-year renewable, then I think we've covered the investment we've made thus far in the property and future investments too. That's a really long time to have a lease.
So if we have the lease and, you know, OU is giving it back to us, like, they can't do anything else with it. And really, it's not to their benefit to do anything else because it is for their infrastructure and for the airport.
Right. It couldn't be developed or it would, it would destroy the runway protection zone.
Yeah. I still, I, my preference would be not to have OU own or, you know, a piece of our golf course, but this feels a little less, I'm a little less concerned than what's, how Griffin is laid out, just because of the impacts to that and like that's a slightly different conversation.
Griffin was a shorter-term lease. They would not agree to a longer-term lease.
Yeah. I mean, preference is different than require, so...
Yeah. And the agreement says require.
Could we also include first right of refusal or those kinds of clauses in ownership?
For a future lease?
Right. Yeah, if they wanted us, if they had to own it and then they said, oh, well, now since we own it, we're going to go sell it because the airport's going to move to...
That was my question. Would you like a right of, the first purchase, I guess called?
Yeah, and I would want a reversionary clause so that if the airport ever ceases to exist, we get that back as parkland.
For sure. It's not really wanting to sell it.
I mean, that was kind of my thoughts when you talk about 100-year lease. You know, airplanes were barely invented 100 years ago. So that's what's going to happen 100 years from now.
That's what it's going to be, yeah.
I never thought about it like that. Why?
It'd probably be electric and go up and down. You won't have wings. Yes, sir.
I share the same thoughts about that agreement, for sure. I do have some thoughts about the Jenkins Project though, because I definitely feel like that project is a benefit to the university. And we were pretty heavily criticized when we put that project forward by residents who felt like OU should be paying for that project or half of it. And we were like, well, it's a city, it's a city street, it's our responsibility. And so, and I've had to go back and forth with the residents on that street for two years. We had to do the eminent domain proceedings, you know, over whether it should be a three-lane street or whether it had to be four lanes, whether it needs to be four lanes, based on the current traffic count, which would not suggest that it needs to be, but future. So I just feel a certain way about having to pay for right-of-way and a project that is improving the university's appearance, creating a new gateway into the university from Highway 9. It will look real nice right next to the new softball stadium and all that stuff, so I just, can you go back to the map of Jenkins Project?
And councilmember, hold on, I just verified with Public Works that that was on our voter approved list, the project. So Jenkins, it's going to get done. Voters said go for it. And the other element of that whole project, because of you, we were able to negotiate the undergrounding of that one little tiny set of annoying power lines on the east side. So it will be so greatly improved visually and operationally. No more weird tree trimming because, yeah, everything's gone, so...
And there's federal funding in this project, which is dictating the timelines for us.
Yeah. So the, the southern section of the park where the roundabout would be that piece that we've talked about before that would be added to the park but owned by OU, how, how might that piece of land play into this?
Do you remember how the appraisals worked on that remnant?
The red boundary that you have showing on the left side of that screen is what we are...
You're talking about this right here now?
Yeah. I think that's an unreasonable, we have, we've certainly had that conversation as you said.
Current street goes through here, that'll be gone. So there'll now be a green section.
I think that's maybe the next step of negotiations. That's not contained in this MOU. We always thought it was logical that the city would inherit that space. It does no good for the university. It's adjacent to Reeves Park, but that's not included in this negotiation.
It does serve purposes for medieval fare. It adds additional, it richens, you know, a joint.
Yeah, we could do more stuff with our teen center too, but so I, you know, I'm not opposed to going forward to get it done, but I just feel a way about it.
For sure. We have shared that feeling with OU many times.
I think if our cash contribution went away, I think that would make me feel a lot better about it as well. I mean, all the other pieces seem to stack up pretty well, but...
Because I think we'll be taking care of all the landscaping and everything on that street and...
That's a little benefit to OU.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I know.
I would like to hear from Jason, if possible, about the impact to the park if we do this deal, if there's any...
Of Westwood?
Of Westwood, yeah. 100-years seems like a good lease, but...
I don't think any of us would have to worry about this at the end of that lease, but the...
Golf has been around longer than airplanes, though, when you think about it in those terms.
I think reassurance for us that it stays a park and we're able to program and give a low-cost golf option to our community is very important. Feel better about what this offers than what we did in the past, but there is, you know, always owning is a better option than leasing it back. But I feel like we're making it there, but we definitely, we have eight full-time employees out at the golf course, dozen part-time employees, we just want to make sure that they're comfortable with how we move on this and that there's a lot of people that feel nervous about it.
Yeah, yeah. I feel nervous too.
But the golfers themselves aren't going to see any difference.
Under the navigation easement, they, nobody will recognize anything easement. It'll just be on a map and recorded.
Because I mean, I'm willing to agree for sure, like, that we would never construct anything there for ever.
Oh, sure.
Well, if the runway extended and then they came in to say, I want a permit, we'd say, you are too close to the runway, so you really, you help ensure nothing will get built there if they are able to extend the runway.
Does extending this also help with that aviation school that's coming in?
There are a lot of attributes in terms of the types of aircraft that can come and volume of aircraft. In total, a $35 million federal investment in the Max Westheimer Airport, which I think is probably unprecedented. I don't know if Max Westheimer Airport was worth that when OU received it after World War II. It may not have been valued at 35 million, but it really is part of a huge modernization of that airport facility with a brand-new tower, taxiways, more hangar space opportunities. It will just be an expansion of business and aviation jobs that go along with it. So I think it does add value to that aviation school that OU runs and exposure and more job opportunities for the aviation academy that the high school students will attend just northeast of this.
High schoolers and aviation...
So either way, with the easement or with the 100-year lease, basically, would the golf course be required to change in any way?
Only some minor tree trimming, but...
We don't have to redesign on our golf course or anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, we might, we might be limited in things we could do in the future if we wanted to put a netting up, thank you, like a fence, netting up or something like that. We might be limited on the height, but we could do something like that.
So if we are required to have them own the land, does that change the valuation at all?
No.
So it would still remain 2 million?
Yes.
Either way?
Right.
Okay. I think the other thing that's like making me feel really uneasy about this is that we're not going to know what the FAA is requiring by the time we vote on this.
Right.
So like, we're kind of running blind a little bit? And so like, is there a way to put in the provision, something around? And I think that's, I think that's what you were getting to, that like, if the FAA makes a different decision or is requiring, like, is there a way that we're going to be able to pull back if we don't like that?
Like conditional approval?
Yeah. That's what I was trying to say earlier, like, if they say this, then I want it to have to come back to us.
We don't have all the facts to make a decision that this is the way that we're going to go forward.
Well, can we get ahead on it and just go ahead and pass that the easement? And then they can do what they want to do and then if we have to change it back?
Then just come back and revisit it at that time.
That was your hard commitment to...
Yeah. I mean, we could take the, I don't know if they'd agree to it, but we could take the language out of the MOU that is sort of the fallback plan for the lease and transferring it in fee simple and say, we want to, this is 2 million, we want to come back to that later. And we would have to come back with a lease agreement. You know, we obviously don't have that written out and negotiated yet, but if that day came, we would be coming back to council for that approval. It's just, if we don't approve it, we have the MOU...
Kind of be required to do it if we had the MOU?
I mean, we could still fight over the terms of the lease, but...
But I feel like we're in a better position if we, they have to come back to ask us if that's the route that they want to go.
Yeah.
Like, that puts us in a stronger position.
And we'd like to think that what's going on in Washington DC with the 45-day continuing resolution, that in 45 days it'll magically be done and $35 million will appear. I'm less optimistic that in 45 days, there'll be a budget and this will all be resolved.
I don't know if you were following the news this afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
Cameron Hill.
So, you know, they may, the feedback I anticipate getting if I, if I do as you suggest is they'll say, well, then it's really not worth $2 million to us.
See, and I don't like that. I mean, this presentation started with you talking about Jenkins and how we need to do this and like, we have to play with them if, like, we have to play with them so they can still get what they want in the, and that's what I don't like. Like, I will, I brought you a check for $2 million. Leave my golf course alone. Like, I would rather do that. Like, it just, I don't know. I don't, mm, doesn't, doesn't feel right, not for the taxpayers.
Clear your mind?
I mean, yeah, back to the...
Put the navigation easement in their hands, executed, and balls back in their court.
I want to make sure I get their commitment to transfer the property for Jenkins out of that navigation easement.
Yes.
Well, if not, it can always end up as two T intersections.
Right. I mean, honestly, the project's cheaper if you go back to two T intersections. It's a lost opportunity, but that is an option.
We still need the right-of-way along the whole...
You do, you just want me, you won't need as much when you get to that roundabout, of course, but...
And that's fine.
I can find out.
Are we getting any value for undergrounding utilities?
Not from them.
No.
No.
I feel like that should be part of the equation as well.
That was heavy lifting.
Right?
I agree. Not just the construction cost, but the man-hours it took to acquire...
It's a benefit to them.
It's all a benefit to them. This whole presentation is a benefit to them. I mean, do more sooner.
I think there's a happy ending somewhere.
It's my alma mater.
Right.
But the resident.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll keep talking to them. Obviously, I'm going to be mindful of the deadlines back there. I don't, I can't see Sean's face, but I imagine he's feeling pretty nervous about the federal funds. But we will work as expeditiously as we can and keep you guys updated.
Literally.
I mean, the roundabouts are a great opportunity for an entrance into the city and the university.
I'm ready to do that part.
Makes it hard, yeah.
I'd like them to see it as a benefit to them.
I understand they can't give it away, but...
Well, they did assign some benefit, right?
A million.
Yeah, I could remember.
I mean, but what is...
I know.
It's where petty gas and statues supposed to be.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's a value.
It's serious.
We can find another roundabout. He deserves it.
Well, we'll keep you updated. It doesn't sound like, unless something dramatic happens, it's probably not going to be on your agenda October 10th.
Okay.
But we'll keep working at it.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Item number two, discussion regarding city council meeting procedures from council handbook. What I like to talk to you about is miscellaneous discussion, just kind of, let's talk about what goes on and that. And in my opinion, it's degraded down to a yelling competition type of a thing or an opportunity for people to, to not necessarily give us ideas that we need to be doing or this needs to be fixed in my neighborhood, but for political stances and browbeating. And so it's, it's, it's just not working to me. And what I, we don't have to have it by law, by Robert's rules or anything else. And I know we have it there so that the public can sit down and directly... And I know we have it there so that the public can sit down and directly tell us. They have a lot of opportunities to be able to do that too, by email, by meetings, by phone, by all kinds of stuff. It's, it's not the eighteen hundreds anymore. What I'd like to do is take a year off for miscellaneous discussion, and I'm just kind of throwing that out as a, as a deal. So that what we do is, is at, at the end of the last deal, we just adjourn and we go in. Thoughts?
I would be hesitant to get rid of it completely. I know some cities do it at the beginning of the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Or some other point in the meeting. But I feel like, I feel like most of the people that speak do have I don't want to say legitimate, they have things they want to say that do merit attention. Yeah, and I wouldn't want the fact that we have some folks that come and make it a thing like you're talking about, make us get rid of it completely, so. I'm probably not there yet, but I'm willing to think about what that would mean.
It's just, yeah, that's right.
But there's one that's generally moderated, because I do know the last one we had, they were kind of breaking the rules. I mean, could that be like, well, first in fraction, if I gotta gavel, you forfeit the rest of your time? Like, I also agree, I wouldn't really want to give up that comment portion, because I have learned some things, not through this, these different groups, but from genuine people coming forward.
Dan Munson.
And.
Thank you.
Me too.
So I would hate to take away that opportunity for somebody to really be able to put something out there that we don't know anything about, you know, because we have some bad actors misusing that time. So I would look at cracking down on that actors first.
I can do that. I detest gavelling, but it's, it's worth it in this case. It's gotten to where it's silly. It's, it's not businesslike, it's not orderly, it's.
Spreading misinformation?
Spreading misinformation, doing all kinds of things that, that, that just aren't, aren't good, but anyway.
I mean, yeah, I, I absolutely acknowledge that it's gotten out of hand. It's gotten pretty gross. It's gotten personal and it's just really, it's really uncalled for, but I, I think I share a similar heartburn and it's kind of like, it's the, it's the public's vehicle to yes, air grievances, but also get their point across, get access to us in a public forum, not just through email, which we can choose to answer or ignore, at least in a public setting, we're accountable to a certain degree, so. I think, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from. I, I think I'd be more in favor of giving it stronger teeth.
Okay.
Figuring out a way to enforce it better or to, and I don't think that necessarily has to all fall on you either. You shouldn't, you shouldn't be the only one to make those judgment calls if somebody's violated, you know, violated the, the standing rules there, but what that really looks like, I, I don't have a good answer for that part, but I think stronger teeth is a great first step.
Okay. Councilman?
Some, some other comments and thoughts about it. I think having an opportunity for the public to come and speak in person with us, I mean, it's not really a conversation, but it is a, a chance for them to, to be heard and it is, you know, it's recorded, it's in public record. I think too, for a council that is pretty much voluntary and part-time, and it is not our full-time jobs, it may be the only opportunity for some of us to have FaceTime with constituents. We don't have an office here, we don't hold office hours, many of us have full-time jobs, so it becomes challenging to continue to, you know, potentially have places for our members of our community to come and see us and feel like they've been heard face-to-face, for us to look at them and to, for them to hear us or for us to hear them. So, yeah, I'm, I agree that it has gotten a little out of hand. So, but I, yeah, I'm not, I can't, I can't imagine a world where we don't have an opportunity for people, because I know there are places where, you know, they don't do that and, and I would say that frankly, residents don't feel heard. So, yeah, having some kind of mechanism to be a little bit more forceful about these are our rules, and if we have to state them every single time and be very explicit about that.
We actually do.
I know, but like, I, I think that they don't hear them. And, you know, you as the chair, like, gavelling, that is it's part of the job. You know? I'll, I'll hold the gavel for you if you.
I think to me, I, I see a lot of that, because I've seen people overuse gavel so many times, that it's a rude, you know, you're not gonna say the right thing, you're not gonna talk, and.
Yeah, but it doesn't have to be like that.
I don't think so. I don't think so. It's just. What I would say. Yes, ma'am.
So when I first started, something that changed that Mayor Clark did, which I don't like that she did this, because I think part of when we leave miscellaneous comments, we're all really frustrated, because we hear some nonsense things. When I first started on council, council comments were after miscellaneous comments. So I think that would probably make me feel better instead of just leaving, because a lot of people have questions or they say things and they want clarification, that we can actually do our final comments like at the end and kind of respond to that. I don't know how you felt. I don't remember when she did it. I know you do.
It was council announcements.
Council announcements and we could respond.
From being able to respond back, but there would be a way to, I think, generally state those things.
Right, and that's what we did. I don't know if you preferred that, Stephen.
Miscellaneous at the very beginning, though. Or after proclamation, do miscellaneous, then do council announcements.
Because if you did, if you did miscellaneous upfront, there is a possibility some people would speak their mind and leave.
True.
And not hang around for the whole meeting.
Because some people do say, just to do miscellaneous comments.
Or they could get their questions answered and not have to speak a miscellaneous comment, which is usually more the case, I feel like. You know, you, you run down the list of names at the end of the night and they're not here, they're not here, because they, obviously, what they wanted to say was addressed in the meeting, so.
There are some communities that do it at the beginning of the meeting, also limit the amount of time that you're gonna allow for miscellaneous comments, so that you're not going on for an hour or two hours, then you haven't even gotten into your business yet.
Right.
So they may say there's thirty minutes allowed for miscellaneous comments and you get to go first.
I'd be comfortable with that.
And if you didn't get, make it that time, come back next week and you'll be at the top of the list or something like that. I mean, there's ways to do that, but.
Okay. So if it's thirty minutes, that would be ten people.
Which is sort of what we have anyway.
Generally.
So I would define doing that at the beginning of the meeting, because then we do our comment and then we can generally respond to some of the stuff that we hear, because I know that we want to, but we can't.
Talking miscellaneous and then council and then the meeting.
Business, yeah.
Do you have anything to add?
I was just gonna say too, to keep in mind that some of the folks are definitely on one with an agenda and have signed up for other public comments on our agenda items that we discuss, so this would only be taking out the miscellaneous part, but we would still have to be mindful. There are folks who are gonna find a way to work in particular subjects, no matter what it is.
I agree with that.
But that, and, but that's the nature of, of speaking in public and that's democracy is messy and it's not always convenient and it's not always pleasant, but it, it, it's one of those things that as we, as we look at that, there's a difference between talking in a park with a bunch of people just talking and, and one through an organized meeting. I, I wouldn't mind trying to, to change the order and, and seeing how that goes. I remember when we took a, it used to be at the beginning, and they took it and put it all the way at the back, and I forget who was the mayor at the time, I think it was even before Harold Harrison, and about hung him, so that would have been Reynolds?
Ron Stevens, who wasn't?
Ron Henderson. Before him was Bob Thompson, before him was Bill Nations.
See? And so it was one of those. They moved it to the back because it, it was getting too rowdy, but I think if we go to a half an hour, because we tried the pro-con thing one time, that, that was.
Yeah.
I never liked.
You never know what you're gonna mean.
Yeah, it did work. But I will tell you, music, you know, things that don't have to do with business, I mean, expressing personal whatever will probably get gavelled, and, and so, pardon?
I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't jump in here and say.
It's a freedom of speech thing.
When we've opened the door, we've created a designated public forum, and so that speech is protected under the First Amendment, except as to time, place, and manner. So we've talked before, could we limit it to city business? Well, the city's business is the public health, safety, and welfare, and that's pretty darn broad. And so most people can tie it in. It's hard to regulate. If it's misinformation, we can't really say, you can't say that. You know, one of the best things Rick always says, and it's in a case, a Supreme Court case somewhere, is the answer to, to speech we don't like is more speech. You know, because you can't, as a government, you can only do so much. There's very limited exceptions to, to limiting content, and so we have to be very careful.
So what does that, I was gonna phrase that better. Evan, Evan singing songs, Evan playing guitars.
So an instrument to me is not, to me, that's reasonable. That's not speech. I'm not conveying a message. Singing? You, you might, you're still saying words, so maybe it's a manner. I mean, that's one I need to do more research on, is the singing.
And it's not to get after Evan. Evan, Evan's.
He wants to sing about permaculture.
He's not the only one.
Evan often might as well.
He helps the temperature in the room.
Sure. We have had someone play the piccolo. We have had other people sing, so I mean, it's, it's not just Evan.
Right.
I mean, I would, I would argue that taking up three minutes to do whatever that you want is.
You're right.
Is, well, I would say is a form of protest in some capacity too, because if you want to show up, I mean, like, people are gonna say like, oh, there's thirty minutes. We will fill this with time. Like, that is a tactic, and I think that that is part of public expression, and so not allowing people to come and play instruments, like, I mean, I guess if you want to get technical about it, but like, someone could come play their guitar as a form of protest. And is, do we want to get in the business of silencing that?
Yes.
I. I don't. I mean, it is, we have a right to protest in this country. We have a right to be heard.
In the proper forum.
And like you said, though, democracy is messy and this is part of democracy, is, is working with the public and hearing their input and allowing them to express themselves the way that they want. So, I mean, I think by limiting, like, if we are thinking about moving it up and limiting the time, we're, we're trying something different, we're moving it around. So before we say like, no, yeah, that's just my personal opinion about the music.
You guys look like a flock of birds.
I know, like bam bam, right?
I was just gonna say, to that point, there are things that I do want to say no to, like, addressing people personally.
Sure.
Guys, talking about things that aren't germane to the business we discussed that night, you know, I think.
Well.
I think, well, I think that, I take that one back. I could see, I could see the slippery slope on that.
Catherine's getting a look on that.
I just.
I mean, I think if we changed our rules and we changed how we, how we called it, we could limit it to just topics that were on the agenda that night. Some cities do that.
Oh, but I don't.
But, but you just can't come and air agreements that they've had or something that they can't get traction on, because, you know, it gets buried in Marie Mail or something like that. Like, I, I want them to be able to come and talk about things that aren't necessarily on the agenda.
Well, the personal addressing, I'm not gonna budge on that.
That, agreed. Oh, for sure. No, that's not productive.
And, and, and those things that would, that would be publicly profane or something, of course, and then that, that can come under speech and, and, and things. That's why speech is, has always been interesting to me, because it really depends on who you're talking to as to how it fits in the box.
That's one of my.
And it's, it's so hard. There are so many things that can be damaging to other people and, and by, by speech, we know that. And in keeping these things to where it seems like we are doing business, we are doing the business of the city more than what we are protesting or doing anything like that. There are other forums for that. You don't walk into a movie theater and protest the theme of the movie. You cannot buy a ticket. That's how you do that. And so, you know, it's just, it, I'm, I'm not sure.
I would argue people have the right to do that if they want to.
Yeah, well, they probably do. They'd probably get thrown out.
But we already have a resolution about decorum, right? So, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we put it on the screen every time. I went to a conference this last week and I went to a session titled Public Comment, The Good, The Bad, and The Legal. And I'm gonna try and get a copy. I have the PDF version. They, they had several instances where they had the, they went and took court cases and pulled the video of the meeting that the court case was about and, and then told you the court's ruling, and so even cursing is hard to regulate. Some of the things that Austin, Texas, has going on in their miscellaneous discussion, they'll have a ten-hour meeting because of miscellaneous discussion. And some really outrageous things being said that they cannot stop because they have opened that door. So it was pretty fascinating. I'm gonna try and get the actual PowerPoint so I can share that with you. I would not play it at a meeting because some of these were
Yeah.
Pretty shocking.
Mama Hall saying no.
Everything Councilmember Schuler said about giving the citizens, like, because we are part-time. Most of us are so busy, I mean, to answer emails and everything else, it really does give people a chance that I think they can actually feel like they come and talk to us one-on-one. If we ignore their emails, they still have a chance to come and talk to us. And what we talked about at the retreat, you know, civic engagement and civic IQ. If we take away their ability, you know, the citizen's right to come speak, that's limiting their civic, what I just said, quite a bit, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, during my time on council, all four of the mayors I've served with have made adjustments, and it has seemingly gotten worse. The more that we've tried to control it or limit it, the beha, maybe that, maybe it's not linked, but like, the behavior or the things that happen seemingly have gotten more intense, and again, maybe that's just everywhere, a matter of things, but when I first got on council, like I said, we had there was public comment on consent. Mayor Rosenthal instituted the blue card to sign up to speak about a consent item, so that was the first change. But it was five minutes, well, consent comment was unlimited time, which was a little loophole that a few people discovered back then.
I was gonna say, we'll find a way around all of that.
And then five minutes was miscellaneous comment, and then council comments were the last, were the end of the meeting. And then Mayor Miller changed five minutes to three minutes. And I felt like that's had an effect too, where people get up there and now they're, they're trying to cram everything in in three minutes and people get real frustrated and
Flustered.
Sometimes they leave upset because they feel like they couldn't get their point across. So that was that change, and then Mayor Clark made the, moving the, our comments to the beginning, requiring online signup. And so we've just kind of seen it get more restrictive and at the same time, seeing like temperatures from the public get more heated, it seems like.
What happens when you back people into a corner?
Just about to say it's like that.
They wanna fight about it.
And I felt like, at the, when we had, I guess you could say, the final word, we could at least end the meeting on, here's the events happening and try to keep Councilmember from responding personally to anybody, but.
It's hard not.
Sometimes just giving a, well, here's the events coming up and here's my take on the summary of the meeting. Have a good night, everybody. Now it kind of ends on a, it could end on a public commenter who's really upset about something and then it's just like silence adjourned.
Yeah.
It feels like a. Yeah, so.
Well, let's try that out. Well, you want a trial period or trial until we correct it again?
Sure.
I think we can try, yeah, but I do want to make sure we preserve it, and I do have concern about there being a time limit because of.
It was five when I started.
Strategically, well, not necessarily the five minutes, but there being thirty-minute time period to have it, because then I could see an opportunity for a group to, like, take that whole time and not, like strategically take it so that nobody else could speak and that would, I wouldn't want to see that.
We've been good, I think, in the, in the length of our meetings. It's still always longer than what I like, but other than that meeting that you were trying to go to the airplane at two o'clock in the morning and it kept on going and going and going and going. And, but other than that, we're normally, we're on, done by bedtime.
Yeah, I feel like our meetings, when I first started, I don't feel like our meetings were longer than they are now, even though we had unlimited time and five minutes and.
We went through a lot of years of midnight, one AM.
Yeah.
Yes, at least we're zooming in and I stand on my.
I mean, it's been, I mean, they are getting better on time.
And, and like I mentioned before about like the budget meeting in twenty twenty that went, you know, it's all three. know, until 3:30. And then Mayor Clark made changes to the meetings after that, with the online signup and limiting time. And then the very next meeting lasted just 30 minutes shorter, the next budget meeting. So it didn't even really do anything in that instance, anyway.
I mean, if it got crazy, and people were like, hijacking it, we could always try, like, not to exceed 45 minutes, or something.
Well, not letting people get up and repeat the same thing over and over again.
That's the thing that's hard, and my, my favorite thing would be to only put Norman residents down, but that, what happens if somebody lives in Moore, and it's affected by Norman, or Newcastle, or somewhere else? That's not fair. What happens if somebody from Pierre, South Dakota, shows up and says, you know, here's a good idea, I think, and they, when they sit down, they go, whoa, one came down. And so, let's do that. And so, it's just, it's, it's hard to do.
Nash, what do you think? You haven't said anything.
Yeah, I wonder if, yeah, the signups had an adverse effect on, on time, because there's a lot of people that are signing up for just every, every topic, and then feel obligated to go up and talk about stuff that they're not actually that interested in.
We see this, how people line up, you know?
Yeah. But it has gotten a lot better than it was, in terms of time, like, getting out in two hours, fantastic. You know, it's my, my routine, get out, get down with the meetings, usually over Zoom, because it was, these were different times, maybe four times, long, long ago. And we'd be done with the meeting, and it's all go to Taco Bell, because nothing else is open. Yeah, aside, aside from, I don't know, looking into the signups and how it's affected the duration of the meetings, since before and after implementation, because I think we started that around April of 2021, is in the lead-up to that, that year's budget thing.
I think we did it to, Mayor Clark kind of started it when we had the Zoom meetings, because it was an easier way for people to register, because they had to come down here and talk to you all through.
In here.
And then you all were at home, and I think that's kind of how it started. And then, of course, you know, we had that big, long meeting the year before, but most people, I don't know of that many people that come in and say, I didn't know you had to sign up. I mean, there have been a few, but, well, I think most people are used to it now, and they're signing up now, and they may sign up for every item, and I get that that's a little annoying, but.
And then they say pass, three quarters of the time, right?
So there are some downsides to that, I guess, but.
Well, yeah, and to that point, and the point that Councilman Holman made about that process getting hijacked, I mean, I think we really need to take a look at our signup system, and see if this is going to fit this newer format. If we're only allowing 30 minutes total, I mean, I think that we might need to do things a little differently, so that the same 10 people don't sign up the second the least, the list gets, you know, released, and they know the time it gets released, and that process gets hijacked, and people who actually do want to get their point across don't have the opportunity.
So how do you want to do that?
I don't really have an answer for that part. I just think it's something we need to look at.
It would be easiest, then, to just not do it online, just do it physically here.
Yeah, I wonder if, like, at least for the miscellaneous portion of it, like, that, you have to show up, but like, you could sign up for the items that are on the agenda.
Oh, heck.
Online.
Because that gets published on Friday.
Right, so like, those are fine, but if you want to come and speak at miscellaneous, you have to come physically here and sign up, so that you're not bumping somebody else out, just because you were there at 5:00 on Friday.
And to that point, I don't, I'd be open to putting a cap on how many times you could speak in a row, like, weeks in a row. I know that's also a slippery slope, but I, again, I'm trying to, I want to protect this, and make sure everybody gets an opportunity, and for the same people, they just show up. They know now that you just sign up in person, and they get here at 3:00 in the afternoon, and, you know, the same.
I think with, with a handwritten list in-house, that we go down the list, and if you're number eight, and in 30 minutes, we've only gotten through number seven, you're the first one on the list next week, you're guaranteed a spot.
But that, that topic might not be available the following week, that's kind of the...
It's miscellaneous, you can talk about anything that you want.
I know, but that might not be an issue in two weeks from now, that's what I'm saying.
That's true.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying not to limit people's opportunity here.
I know.
I think we got to bump it up to 45 minutes, because we...
Oh, no.
I know, Mayor.
I think we can start with 30 and see how it goes, but...
I mean, we usually have like, 10 anyway, but I don't want it to be monopolized, with just the same cranky people.
Well, and it'll, it'll actually, when you think about three minutes, and they have to come down and stuff, it's actually about five minutes per person.
Yeah, by the time they get up, I mean, I, I've kind of wanted to like, put a list up ahead of time, say, get prepared, get down here, close if you're next.
We have video screens.
Well, back in the day, you used to have the big clock you set on the counter, and it would count down, right in front of the podium.
I mean, people are going to do what they're going to do anyway. Even when we were doing Zoom, and we had people lining up, you know, you guys were at home, and I would like, call like, four names at once, and say, okay, this is the next floor, go ahead and line up in the hallway and get ready to go in. It was a mess.
It was a production.
It was just, I mean.
Well, I like that idea. Once a month, or, you know, some kind of thing like that, would, that would help break up the, the continuing, whatever, just the drone of that going on, and...
Do you want to...
And I'm not violating anything that way. They have to be able to speak on agenda items, right?
Yeah.
And so, I'm obviously not going to say anything against that. So, what did we decide? It would basically be, we're going to take a half, 30 minutes to start with? 35 minutes?
I know, 33, 36.
Say 10 people?
10 people. That would probably be almost an hour.
Yeah, some people don't take.
Well, you would, do you want to just start it next Tuesday, or do you want to have an opportunity to say, we're changing the rules, and this is the way it's going to be?
We better give them some, some heads up.
I agree.
And then we can read that out. I would say we're going to allot a half an hour, 30 minutes, and so we would encourage people, if you're the, you know where you're, she might be able to read out who's on deck. If you're the next one on deck, if you'd please come down, and we'll put a chair out there somewhere, and designate that, that can be the on-deck chair.
Can you publish that list? Can that list be available to the public, who the 10 speakers are?
Well, they're talking about putting it at the beginning.
They sign in, they come in.
I just mean, like, so...
And so, we'll put it at the thing, and then we'll end the meeting with council comments, is that what we're saying? Or you want to go right afterwards?
I prefer it when we're at the end, but, I mean, I don't really...
I liked it at the end, too, because then, over stuff we talked about, like...
Decisions made.
Yeah.
Yeah, that works for me.
I would just say that the likelihood of people still watching at the end of the meeting is less than at the beginning. So, when we say things at the beginning, I think more people get the message.
So you're suggesting that what we do is miscellaneous comments, then council comments, then going to the meeting?
Then the meeting can end on the last agenda.
Whatever the item means.
Which would be less...
Unless I want to hear from me and Matt, as I have to talk.
I mean, people will have their piece to speak on that item.
No, and it actually, we'll put out the rules, yeah, whatever that is.
The 24th.
The end of the meeting won't just be like, free fall for all components.
And then so, the first meeting, in November, we can start that, this, and just see how it works. If it don't work, shoot it and go ahead and do it again.
I'm just going to request that Evan closes out the meeting.
With a song, sing us out, Evan.
I feel like a million bucks, every time he gets done talking.
I'd be okay with miscellaneous comments being at the end if Evan was the last.
You guys are going to make my hair turn.
Ground number of mayor.
I know.
You'd like a good sing-song.
That's right.
We want, we want to hear it.
All right, anything else from us? Well, let's get out of here, we're adjourned.